Good evening, and welcome to the January 10th, 2018 Murfreesboro Planning Commission Meeting. We have a quorum present, so I called the meeting to order. I apologize for the quality of this microphone here. My voice is perfectly fine. There must be something wrong with this microphone. I'll hold out as long as I can tonight. I've had some of this crud going around. But anyway, we'll get started here. The first public hearing tonight is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding Chart 2 and Chart 2 endodes, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements, and land use intensity ratios pertaining to the maximum gross density and open space requirements in the RSA Type 2, RSA Type 3 zoning districts. Murfreesboro Planning Commission Department, Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Anthony, good night. Good night. There you are. Hello.
Good evening, sir. And I'm suffering from the same microphone issues that you are, so just ignore those. This zoning ordinance revision has three parts, and they are all related to the recently created RSA Type 2 and Type 3 zoning districts. You may remember, those districts were created back in 2017. The RSA Type 2 is for what we would call suburban townhouses. These are the typical townhouses that we see with front-entry garages setback from the street. The Type 3 is for urban townhouses. This is the product that we envision seeing more of in the downtown area in the future as we see redevelopment in the bottoms and the Highland area. These are the townhouses that would be pushed closer to the street and probably not have front-facing garages. Those would be more in the back and side. So the three parts of this zoning ordinance revision. First, Chart 2 currently shows that the maximum density for townhouses in the RSA Type 2 and Type 3 is 21.5 dwelling units per acre. With this revision, we would like to reduce that density down to 12 dwelling units per acre. That would put it more on par with the RM12 zoning district. Staff is undertaking currently a study on the possible expansion of the city core overlay district, and we may come back later to propose raising the maximum density in the RSA Type 3 to something else again in the future. But for right now, if we can set it at 12, that's what our request is. The second part of the amendment would add an end note to Chart 2 to clarify that the minimum lot area and lot width requirements for townhouses in the RSA Type 2 and Type 3 districts would apply to developments where each townhouse is recorded on its own lot of record. And the third part of the amendment would revise End Note 33 of Chart 2 to indicate that the minimum open space requirement in the RSA Type 2 district would apply to all townhouse developments regardless of their size. Staff requests that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and then make a recommendation to the City Council, and we can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Anthony? Okay, before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by in case you've never been here before. We have 11 public hearings to do tonight, like I said, so we will be observing the three-minute time limit. When you come to the podium, please state your name, give your address. Keep your comments and questions to no more than three minutes. If you do have questions, the staff will make notes of your questions, and we'll try to address those questions at the conclusion of the public hearing, not during your three minutes. So make all your comments and end questions to the Planning Commission, if you would, and not members of the audience. That being said, I'll open the public hearing on this matter. Anybody'd like to come forward, please come forward at this time. Nobody on this proposal? Just this first public hearing? Okay. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments by members of the Planning Commission?
If not, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve. Sub都需要staff comments?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is an annexation plan of services and an annexation petition for approximately 3.28 acres located along South Church Street and Volunteer Road, Murfreesboro Medical Center Properties is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, sir. This next public hearing is free to consider a petition which our office has received by the Murfreesboro Medical Center Properties, and they currently own a parcel located north of Volunteer Road. And Volunteer Road is the road that runs into Shelbyville Pike and also goes into the Parkfield Crescent Park near the Wilderness Center, so you may be familiar with it. And the property is identified in purple on the map before you, also included in the study as additional right-of-way along Shelbyville Pike or Highway 231 and Volunteer Road, the part of the right-of-way that's contiguous with the parcel. So the, I mentioned that we did receive a petition to annex the property. We've studied the property and the ability of the city to provide services to it, and we believe that we'll be able to provide services to the property within a reasonable timeframe. Most of those will be extended as it's developed, as the parcel is currently vacant undeveloped property. There is a companion zoning change request, which is not being considered with this public hearing. This public hearing is to consider the plan of services and the petition for annexation. After you close this public hearing, we'll have another public hearing that will be to consider the matter of the zoning. And the medical clinic does have a request to change the zoning to allow one, but like I mentioned, this is for the annexation. I've included the plan of services in your materials, so if you have any questions about them, we'll be glad to answer it. Otherwise, you conduct a public hearing before formulating a recommendation to City Council.
Okay. Any questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, if not, I'll open the public hearing for this proposal, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Enoch Jarrell with Huddles and Steel Engineering, representing Murfreesboro Medical Properties. With me tonight is Mr. Joey P. and Ms. Denise Flanagan with Murfreesboro Medical Clinic. We did hold a neighborhood meeting Monday night. There are 16 properties along Volunteer Drive, and 11 of those property owners were there. I think their main question as far as annexation was, are we part of it? And the answer was, was no. Y'all would have to request to be annexed into the city. So as far as annexation, that's really all that I have, and be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Jarrell. Would anybody else like to come forward?
My name is Breck Rivada. I live at 201 Volunteer Road, heading back up into the park. Basically, we have a lot of people here probably going to want to talk about the same things I'm going to bring to light. We have a situation where you're coming out of the park, and you come up to 231, where you have to cross, go into traffic, sit at the middle, then make a left back out. The traffic flow there is going to be quite substantially affected by the neighborhood that's going down. I can't remember the name of the neighborhood that's going on down the street, about 300 pieces of property going in there, 300 houses. The Shelbyville traffic coming across, it's very dangerous as it is right now. We're wondering if you're going to put some type of a lane in. I know it's not the city, but it's the state, but I think they would have to provide the infrastructure if they're going to put the property in there to make that intersection more safe since they're putting two right-aways onto Volunteer Road. And, you know, ingress and egress right onto the road, I don't know if it didn't really show it on top of the, on the screen, but those coming in are going to create more traffic that we're going to have to sit behind to get out. And basically, every car that goes out has to go to that middle lane, sit there and wait for the traffic to come down, then to make that left to go back onto 231 to Murfreesboro or right. I mean, the traffic out there is getting horrible. It's dangerous it is now when you're coming out of Murfreesboro to make the right into Volunteer Road. You're almost getting rear-ended. Every time I come home, I'm almost getting rear-ended there. There's going to have to be some type of a slowdown lane in front of their business on 231 so we can come into there, especially with all the more traffic coming in for the, you know, for the hospital or the medical center. And we're wondering why they can't also maybe just, maybe put their entrance on 231 instead of on our road, being that it's a narrow road. You know, it's almost too narrow as it stands now. We're just wondering what exactly their plans are for all of that. And, you know, they purchased the property. I know it's a low compared to the road. It sits down about six and a half feet, I believe. I mean, they should have to build that up and make the entrance where those guardrails are right on the 231. I believe everybody agrees with me that lives on Volunteer Road. It's a very dangerous situation out there right now, even without them in there. But it's just going to, you know, make it a lot worse.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Probably Mr. Huddleston?
Mr. Huddleston.
He had some questions or?
Mr. Balachandra.
Or Mr. Balachandra. I don't know which one. Mr. Balachandra, maybe? Pertaining to the traffic lane improvement and entrance on 231 rather than their road.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb and members of Planning Commission. As part of this project, there will be improvements on 231, complements of a right-turn lane and left-turn lane into the side, and also improvements on Volunteer Drive. It'll be a three-lane cross-section, a left lane, a right lane, and an in lane. There will be also improvements all along Volunteer adjacent to this property.
Okay.
And also, the gentleman that mentioned this is a high-speed roadway, that's why there will be a right-turn lane to get the right turners when they are slowing down to get out of the high-speed way, getting, you know, traffic leaving out of town.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Balachandra, there's a guardrail there right now. Would that guardrail simply be moved back, do you think, in order to accommodate a deceleration lane?
There will be some modifications of the guardrail. Everything will have to be approved by the Tennessee Department of Transportation because that work will be done in the state right away.
Okay. All right. If they're still here after the meeting, they may want to meet with you to ask other questions if you're available.
Glad to answer.
Thank you very much. Any other questions about the Planning Commission or comments? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, I make the motion that we approve the annexation and the plan of services.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next public hearing is the same property, but a zoning application for approximately 3.2 acres located along South Church Street and Volunteer Road to be zoned commercial fringe simultaneous with annexation. Murfreesboro Medical Center Properties is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. This is a companion zoning change request for the annexation that you just considered, and it's for the property, of course, identified in purple on the map before you, and it's property owned by Murfreesboro Medical Center Properties. And they have petition for the annexation. They've also made an application to, in our office, to change the zone to CF simultaneous with annexation. CF stands for Commercial Fringe District. They have intentions of constructing a Murfreesboro Medical Center clinic here, not to the size of the one that we already have located in our gateway area because the property isn't as large, but as a second location. And initially thought that CH Commercial Highway Zoning would be what they should request because it is located along a major highway. We let them know that the Commercial Fringe District actually would allow their use, and so they asked for Commercial Fringe because it's a less intense use than Commercial Highway because they have no intention of using it for anything else, and thought that the CF zoning would be something that you might be more comfortable with in this area. This property is located, again, on the corner of Volunteer Road in Shelbyville Pike. It's on a major arterial, but it's also an entrance to subdivision that leads to a park. And the properties along Volunteer Road are developed, single-family subdivisions and unincorporated area of Rutherford County. To the northeast is the Walmart Neighborhood, or Walmart Supercenter that's zoned PCD Plan Commercial District, and some undeveloped Commercial Highway property. So that's the surrounding land use type. The future land use map does show this area as, to have a suburban residential character. The land use map, of course, is not a proposed zoning map, but it does describe the type of character of development that they anticipate to be in this area, and so what they have identified, or what the map, the plan identifies this area as a suburban residential character, and I have included a description of that in your comments. Planning Commissioners should review this application, hold a public hearing, and then formulate a recommendation to City Council. Mr. Enoch Jarrell represents the applicants. I also know that the owner's representatives are here as well if you have questions about them. At this time, of course, they haven't submitted a site plan because at this stage they're trying to get an entitlement for the zoning. Some of the specifics, we don't have yet, but there are things that are important to Planning Commission, and when you do review a site plan, if this does go through, you'll look at those type elements. I think they've offered some concepts to the public, but of course, that's just a concept plan. But if you have questions about the application, I'll be happy to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Green? Does the applicant have any statement?
Thank you again, Chairman, Planning Commission. I think Ms. Margaret Dan-Green identified a lot of, you know, the Mississippi Medical Center, Mississippi Medical Clinic, you know, is on Garrison Drive. They have about 75 doctors today. It's a lot smaller facility they're looking at. It's a satellite campus, 10 to 12 doctors. It just, there's not a lot of room on the campus they have today. A lot of their demand is out south of town. They identified this area as a growth area for them. You know, we've met with city staff, and they recommended the CF zoning, which works for medical office building. We did discuss some preliminary things with the staff and ROM on traffic and some improvements and things that will be coming with site planning as we get into it. We'll be doing some traffic analysis. One good thing about this use is their, their peak time is more nine to 11 and one to three. It doesn't correspond with the morning peaks you would typically see at six or seven o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning. So there, you know, there will do be additional traffic. And we met with the neighborhood meeting on Monday night. That was their main question is traffic. It's hard today, so we will be looking at, as we stated, the traffic, what kind of improvements may be necessary on Volunteer and on Shelby Highway. Thank you. Any questions?
Did you bring those doctors with you? I might need one for the end of the night.
There's one pediatrician there at the meeting, so.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing for the zoning request at this time, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Hello, I just found out about this today, so I'm kind of unprepared, but.
Please state your name and give your address.
I'm Emily Robinett. Thank you, Chairman, and councilmembers for letting me speak. My family, we moved across town because I have a small family clinic inside Mills Family Pharmacy on Church Street, and we wanted a rural setting. So, so anyway, we moved, and we moved in on Halloween, and it's just kind of disappointing to see that come, that large practice, two-story building in a park-like setting. I've been working as a business owner very hard to build my practice, and it's been slowly but steadily, and I'm very proud of it, and it's, you know, slowly improving. I'm not sure that, and I know there's some other clinics around the area that have openings and availability as well as myself, so I'm not sure it's a huge need, but, but I think it devalues our homes and the park setting to put a large two-story building at the entrance of the count, of the, of the park as well, so that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Robinett. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Questions by the Planning Commission? If there's no questions, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, I make the motion that we approve the zoning request.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item D, zoning application for approximately 5.6 acres located along West Northfield Boulevard and Sulphur Springs Road to amend the Northfield Village PCD. Scott Drum is the applicant. Mr. Anthony?
Thank you, sir. The applicant, Scott Drum, wishes to amend the Northfield Village Plan Commercial Development, which is located at the southwest corner of West Northfield Boulevard and Sulphur Springs Road. The PCD zoning was initially approved by the City Council in 2005, and it was amended in 2016 to allow a self-service storage facility and a multi-tenant commercial structure. The applicant now wishes to amend the PCD for a second time to allow two multi-tenant commercial structures and a three-structure self-service storage facility. The primary storage structure would be two stories in height and would be internally accessed. This is different from the plan approved in 2016, which showed single-story storage structures. At our December meeting, the Commission expressed concern with the amount of non-masonry material on the exterior of the storage buildings. The applicant has revised those structures to incorporate additional brick. The two-story storage building still includes some EFS, but the amount of metal has been greatly reduced, and there are no metal walls visible from public right-of-way or the surrounding properties as shown on the plans that you saw back in December. Surrounding zoning includes RS10 to the north, RS15 to the west and south, and RM16 to the east. The request appears to be consistent with the Murfreesboro 2035 land use plan, which designates the site as appropriate for neighborhood commercial. Rob Mulchan from SEC is here to talk more about the request. Staff requests that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and then make a recommendation to the City Council. We can answer any questions that you may have.
Rob, do you have anything you'd like to say? How silly of me.
Always full of words, you know that. Good evening, Rob Mulchan, SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Matt Taylor, SEC, Mr. Jim Lowen, the architect of Lowen Associates, and Mr. Scott Drum, the applicant. We're here tonight to present to you the request for an amendment to the Northfield Village PCD. As you know, the project is actually located at the southwest corner of Northfield Boulevard and Sulphur Springs Road. As you can see, the most recent aerial imagery we have is there's still an existing barn structure located in the center of the property, but the remainder of the property is left as green space with open pasture and tree areas on that side. And then also Forest Hills Estates is located to the south and to the west of the property. As you recall, a year and a half or so ago, we came through with regards to amending the original 2005 PCD. As you can see here in the imagery right now, this is the plan that was approved regards to this. You can see it was actually incorporated to be two lots at that point in time. One lot was left undeveloped in regards to a potential future user, and the other lot was developed as a nine-building self-storage facility, which incorporated about 65,000 square feet of storage space. These were also only one-story buildings, and all the buildings that align the periphery or the edges or boundaries of the property were all masonry in that context. And along the western and southern boundaries with Forest Hills Estates, we provided a Type C buffer to actually accent more of the development along that edges of the property. Moving forward, our new applicant is looking to more or less modify this in two regards. One is we've consolidated down the amount of the actual square, the actual footprint of the self-storage facility into a three-building configuration, and then that'll, then reconfigured it into two available lots for future development in regards to those. The main portion of tonight's proposal is to look at Lot 1 in regards to the self-storage facility. As you can see on the plan itself, the plan is at 100,000 square feet of self-storage. This now incorporates not only just a one-story, but it has a two-story main central conditioned storage building in the center of the property. The buildings along the western and southern boundaries will remain one-story, and the exteriors of those will remain as all masonry or brick-type materials along that. We're still incorporating also the Type C buffer along the western and southern periphery of the, of the project. As part of this project before, and as we will move forward, we are still looking at taking and putting in a dedicated turn lane on Northfield Boulevard. That's a, we're going to move our alignment to that original configuration of the entrance over to, or meet our new entrance on that side. So we'll have a deceleration lane on the eastbound and for a right-hand turn in. We're also going to be incorporating a left-hand turn in the median on Northfield heading west toward the turn in the project. We'll also still incorporate three lanes, you know, one lane in, two lanes out, right and left in and out on the entrance on that side. We'll also still be meeting up with regards to our, the commitment we made to go ahead and move forward with improving Sulphur Springs Road still, so it's the same plan as we were a year and a half ago, incorporating from just south of our property line, widening out Sulphur Springs Road to incorporate a three-lane configuration at the intersection with Northfield Boulevard. Again, looking at a single-story structure on the western and southern peripheries of the project, the main central two-story conditioned building in the middle. We've added a lot of architectural characteristics to this building as we talked about in regards to what we came forth at the workshop versus what you would ask us to come back with tonight. I think you have, you know, the drawings have been distributed to you all for reference on regards to the change to the architectural character that Mr. Lowen worked up on that side. So we've provided a lot more masonry material in regards to all four sides of that two-story structure, but also put a lot of vertical articulation into the, into the actual architecture itself, and along with some varied roof lines as well. This is a view of the actual frontage along Northfield, and as you can see, the two-story element of the main central mass along with the one-story element on there, when they do a little blow-up. This is the main entrance into the facility itself off of Northfield, as you can see to the right-hand side, the little clock tower, and that is actually the office of leasing space. And to the left-hand side of the entrance into the main body of the, of the site is the entrance to the conditioned heated two-story space on that side. This is a view of the actual frontage on Northfield, looking at the architectural character of the building itself, good articulation of the actual building mass, breaking it up with different types of components, materials, and also roof lines. Main component of this building, we brick, stone, and some EFS, cast stone incorporated into some liner elements in order to make the architectural character of the building look better. Here we have a couple of the, this is all, this is the two-story building itself. This is looking at all four sides with the north, Northfield side and the top. The side that faces Lot 2 is the second image coming down from the top. As you can see, we've gone back and totally removed in regards to the original component when we came to the workshop was a all-metal facade. We've come back and incorporated the same masonry-type component that was along Northfield has now been composed around all four sides of this building. Looking at the actual one-story structures in regards to what would be facing our neighbors in the Forest Hills Estates area, and this is still incorporating the all-brick facade, looking out, you know, so as your neighbors are looking towards the property and looking at this, this is all brick masonry on that side with the, with the metal roofing on that side. And then you see the clock tower element that's on the corner of the building one there. Little diagram here just to kind of show, you guys asked in regards to looking at this in the standpoint of how this would look in regards to the two-story component and the one-story component. As you can see in this diagram, the one-story buildings along the periphery and. the periphery and to see what more or less this two-story would look, would look behind the one-story element. So you can see in the foreground there, the one-story buildings themselves in the background, how much of that building would be, the two-story building would look like in regards to standing in your backyard looking at these properties. Again, like I said, we're incorporating the type-C buffer, and that'll extend all the way from Sulphur Springs Road back to the west and all the way up the western boundary along our neighbors with the existing properties on that side. We'll also be incorporating foundation plantings around any of the buildings along the periphery that have a foundational element to it, and then we'll also be incorporating any screening in trash and parking areas as well. We'll be incorporating also as part of this, a, is a six-foot-tall PVC fence. We're looking more like a oak or walnut style, not just your, you know, bright white fence on that side. That'll be incorporated, as you can see in the diagram here on the yellow line, that extends from Building 3 to the building along the southern periphery all the way back over to Sulphur Springs. So this is incorporating not only the type-C buffer, but also incorporating that, you know, opaque fence system on the backside of that to help in any additional screening as lots 2 and 3 develop over time. Of course, we're utilizing all evergreen-type materials in that buffer on that side, magnolias and arborvitae. Looking at lots 2 and 3, we've taken a lot of consideration. This more or less is the same kind of types of uses we were approved for back in 2016 on lots 2 and 3, looking at low-impact, and there were those types of services offered, you know, to the area in regards to the neighbors in the, in Northfield and the Sulphur Springs area. You know, such things as, you know, a card shop or a flower shop, weight loss facility, barber shop, delicatessen. So your everyday kind of uses is what we see, and that's what the list that's inside, inside your pattern book right now on page 23 is the list of uses. They are pretty, they are exactly the same uses that we moved forward with when we got our approval a year and a half ago on that side. I appreciate your time and consideration in this project. I'm available for any questions now or after the meet, a public hearing.
Questions from the planning commission?
Rob, this turning lane, can you explain that again? Because it doesn't look like it's a correct angle if we're looking at it from this map. Can we put that back up on the screen again? Because what we're looking at, Rob, is the one that has the arrow, arrow showing down. So is that how the turning lane is gonna be accessed to the cross property?
The cross property, the diagram you see to the north over there, we're working with the, with the city and the applicant across the street. They're actually gonna be moving their driveway to match up to this driveway that we're representing on our, on our plans here. So we've already been in negotiations and the staff has been working with the applicant in regards to their plans on the other side of the street to make those certain, these all line up.
That, that project across the street's kind of a work in progress right now, just, just FYI.
Okay, but, but you have determined that they will move it to match this?
Yeah, yeah.
I know this is not a...
That feedback's been, been given to them.
Okay, okay. Just, just looking at the map on page 27, it would be a mess out there if it was like it's shown on page 27.
Yeah, well, that, that plan is, I think they're showing that on there just for informational purposes, but that, we've consulted with, with the design engineer of that, on that plan, but it's, it's a work in progress at this point.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Rob, can you give me an idea of the height of the building? I mean, I, I know that lot is, you know, slopes a lot, and I guess when we're looking at the new drawings you gave out, the, the top elevation, the main Northfield elevation, that would be the main door into the building on the right-hand or the higher end of the property there.
That height of that...
Even there, that looks like a really tall two-story. So, I mean, I realize that's got the extra peak and stuff, but how tall is each story?
The actual top of that peak right there is 35 feet. So we, as part of the pattern book before and now, we've concurrently said the maximum height would be 40 foot, so I think he's, I think Mr. Lowen is here, he can address this as well, but I think he's got that peak right now at 36-foot high on that.
And so then the, just the, not the peaks, but the actual elevation, is it, it looks almost like a three-story. Is there a basement and then two stories, or?
No, it's a two-story, and based on the configuration, the way the land lays out is that you have a, it's, it's definitely gonna look higher on that, on the, would be the eastern side, but more the left-hand side of what you see on the diagram there because the property falls from the west to the east on that side. So it's gonna look a little bit taller than a two-story element on that western side, whereas on the eastern side where you actually enter the, enter the, the facility off of Northfield, it's more or less that 35-foot height because that grade is up higher, whereas the building is now, the actual floor plan of that building more or less is where that door comes in. It's a flat plane across there, so there's actually a little bit longer of a footer on that western, on that eastern side of there, so that building looks a little taller because of the fallen, fallen grade on that side.
I thought the discussion was that the eastern side was gonna be below grade.
The eastern side.
Which would make it lower for when the, when the, the guys from the neighborhood looked into it, but I may be wrong, but I thought it was gonna be below grade.
Well, we may have spoken at that point in time, but, you know, based on where the entrance to this is, that the, the entrance to the lower portion of the two-story is gonna be at that higher elevation that they, that she's speaking about on that side. So that floor plan will go straight across over there on that side. So, yeah, I think we may have spoken in regards to the fact that we might have had a little reassessment in regards to that as you go into the site. So a portion of that might be below grade, I don't know to the extent in regards to actual difference between the actual parking lot behind the, behind the building itself in regards to how much depth's on that side, but that's more or less kind of, you're gonna have some of that bill, that main part, building 2 will be recessed underground, but at that front entrance, as you're coming up into the site, that finished floor elevation will be kind of set there at that, in that front side, and you'll probably ramp up more into the back as you're going towards the back more of the property.
Rob, the fencing running across the back of the property currently in the booklet, it shows it as a six-foot fence, and I had mentioned to Matt prior to the meeting, some concern with that not being comparable to the sightline blockage that you've got coming off the back of the building down there. He indicated to me that it wouldn't be any problem, although there is an added expense of doing it, but to change that from a six-foot fence to an eight-foot fence, would, would you agree to that?
At least.
Yeah, I think we'd be fine with making that change. I mean, it makes an ideal sense because you're looking at that one-story building along just the, the standpoint of where the storage facility is, you're looking at 10 to 13-foot in regards to where the eve is and to where the actual pitch of that roof line is.
And you've also got the continuation of the property continuing to slope downhill, so I'm just trying to increase that sightline for the, for the residential side of the property.
I think we're, we're in agreeance with that. We'll make that modification.
And the, the one thing I'll assure you, not very many people walk on Sulphur Springs Road, and, and it's purely for the reason it's a good place to get run over. The, the improvement that we're getting out of this is definitely the sidewalks that are along the, the three-lane property here. I'm not sure by looking at the pictures that we've got, the booklets and what you've got shown here, how far that comes back up Sulphur Springs Road. Does it make it to the three-way stop there at Kingwood and Sulphur Springs?
I don't believe it makes it down there. I know we were, we keep the three-lane configuration to just set to our property line, and at that point in time, it starts to taper back down to the two-lane configuration to south of our property line.
Right. Would it, would it be possible to continue that three-lane configuration, because it serves multiple purposes? It allows people coming off Kingwood to have an acceleration lane that they could use to get into the roadway. Had a wreck there this week where somebody was pulling out and they got together and one of them winds up off on the, the side of the creek there. But the, and it serves two purposes. It, it allows for an acceleration lane there, but it also would move the sidewalk further up to Kingwood. And if it moves that sidewalk to Kingwood, then all of a sudden you've got a connectivity point. Otherwise, when you walk down Kingwood, you've gotta walk down the narrowest section of Sulphur Springs until the road widens out to where your project is. And from, from what you're showing here, where it's starting to narrow, if you would just pull that back to, it looks like you're going to 50-foot already, and I think you're gonna have to go 100-foot to hit the, the three-way stop. So, yeah. Yeah, that picture shows it. And, and the previous picture showed the three lanes going, and the sidewalk going beyond your property line going on to the residential property behind it. Can we extend that to the three-way stop, I guess is my ultimate question.
Mr. Schmuthman, we'll have to, I, I don't think we can extend the full three-lane just because of the cost. We could certainly look and see if there is adequate right-of-way to extend a sidewalk from there. I think that's what you're getting at is the important part, the pedestrian linkage.
Absolutely is.
I would just have to check and see if there's adequate right-of-way beyond our property to do that, just because we don't control that property.
Any other questions? There's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Now we're gonna have to open up public hearing.
I guess I'll too first, and we talked about it so long, I thought we'd already done it. Excuse me. I'll open the public hearing this time, asking anybody to come forward.
Hello, my name is Lanny Akonik, 2010 Sanders Court. My property is the west of the storage facility and will be virtually in my backyard. And so I was concerned after reading some of the information that I had about the, about what it was going to look like, and I'm glad to see that some of the materials have been upgraded already, and it appears that that will look better from, at least from my backyard. Also, there's a concern about, you're talking about traffic and you're talking about the, the property going in across the street. It's gonna be two commercial areas now, right there on that hill. We've addressed this in the community before about all the accidents at the base of that hill on Northfield and Sulphur Springs, and now this is just gonna add a lot more traffic to that area, we assume, and that's a concern. The only other concern I had other than what this is gonna do to my property values is the, is will there be blasting during the construction of it? That whole area in my backyard, and it appears that it continues on down the hill, is pretty much solid rock, and I don't know how much in construction you have to dig into rock or dig into the earth, but it will include blasting and so forth, and that's really close to some of our homes. My wife also ha, is a massage therapist, and she has a practice in our home. That could be very disruptive if it goes on the blasting for a long period of time, and that's the last concern that I have. Thank you for letting me address the group.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lamb, commissioners, thank you for hearing us out tonight. My name's Randy Johnson. I live at 615 Elliott Drive. Project's right out my front door. It's been with great interest, I've watched this project for the last 12 years or so, go from a proposed nice shopping center, neighborhood shops and offices, to, I guess, 10 years later, to self-storage facility, which was, was very nicely designed, very, very attractive. And then we've had this one come in that's, it was reduced building materials and we appreciate the, the upgrade of those. My big concern is a two-story building in its neighborhood. You're, you're right in the neighborhood with single-story housing. That is a big building, it looked like in those pictures. And you've got the, you're getting ready to get requests for more zoning across the street, this other property in the area, and I think we'd be setting a precedent here to put a two-story building on this property in the neighborhood. As Mr. Schmuthman pointed out, that, that land falls off, and the, the original proposals, I believe the, the multiple storage units were set on different levels going down with the property line, which kept it from being just a big box sitting up there. So, bottom line, I guess we would request that you deny this zoning request, send it back for a single-story building. The other thing I did notice in the paperwork tonight, part of it says that these, that lots 2 and 3 would be limited to 35 feet. Later in, underneath the site plan, and I'm sorry, I don't have the page number, it says for lots 2 and 3, building heights shall not exceed 40 feet. So we've got a, we've got a disconnect there on, on what the height of those could be. Again, we would appreciate keeping this a lower-profile project for the, for the appearance of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
My name is Ted Sutherland. I live at 1215 Sulphur Springs Road, which is directly north on Sulphur Springs Road across Northfield. Like the gentleman said right before me, I'm opposed to the two-story building. I'm opposed to the three lots, that the two lots that I had seen in the initial proposal, I thought was okay, but the three lots, I think that we're pushing it. And also, in this proposed site one, Lot 1 site design, you're showing across the street as already a commercial zone. To my knowledge, it hadn't been voted on or anything yet. It's just been a proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutherland. Anybody else?
My name is Bill Jones. Been living in Murfreesboro since 1957. I bought a house over on Sulphur Springs Road, 1303, about 17 years ago. Good country town, we had, I got deers in the front yard and creek running in front of my house and, and, but as time has gone on, I can't get out of my driveway in the morning now, traffic at, coming out. I have to wait sometimes five, 10 minutes to even get a break. Somebody let me out at around 7:30, 8 o'clock. I'm opposed to this only because that we started out and with the understanding that they would build this particular shopping center. And then we went from that to this beautiful building they was gonna build, and we said, okay, let's do that. And then after that, we've got now three lots, and there is a spring on this property that I sure hate to see destroyed or whatever what might become of that on the lower end of Sulphur Springs Road. And the other thing is traffic. I tell you what, when you come out in that highway of Sulphur Springs, I sit there at my house, and I'm next door to Ted, just tall, I can sit there and watch him wreck up there at the corner. It's so much traffic coming down that hill, over that little hill, and they hit the brakes down there, or they try to run a stop sign, and it's just a continuum of accidents down there. And I just think that we've gone from good to bad on this project, and I think we ought to kind of take a better look at it, and the building's too much, it's too tall for that neighborhood, especially the people that live right around there. And I live across the street, where like Ted said while ago, now they're proposing across the street another commercial property, and, and, you know, it's just taking our country neighborhood and making it into a city project, and we're, we're in a neighborhood, not in a commercial business area. And I worked the city here 17 years, and I feel like it's one of the best cities that I have ever been in, in my life, and I think that we're, we have the best leaders here that you'd have anywhere, and I thank the zoning board, I've known Mr. Lamb and some of the others on here for so long, that I know y'all gonna do what's right, and I'm gonna leave it in your hands. I just had to say a little bit about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you for your many years of service to the community. I see no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Mulchan, 35 or 40 feet?
40 foot is the maximum we requested on the booklet. I was trying to find the reference to 35 foot, but I couldn't find it anywhere. If there's a page that I missed at the point in time, but on page 20... If there's a page that I missed at the point in time, but on page 24, which lists all the specifics in regards to the building, lots two and three, it's listed as 40-foot maximum height, which would be the same height as the storage facility lot as well. So, all three lots would contain a 40-foot maximum height.
Okay. Blasting?
Blasting with anything in middle Tennessee, and you know, we all know, every project we bring through here, it comes through with a blasting component in some form or fashion, and whether that's to put in ground sewer or infrastructure, anything like that. Every, every contractor has a responsibility to be licensed and carry insurance in regards to blasting. If at one time does come to fruition for this project to move forward, property neighbors should do their documentation in regards to video and, and pictures and stuff. And if there is any damage that is associated from any blasting that occurs with this project, report that to the contractor, and their liability insurance should cover some of that. But in regards to the storage facility, the blasting side of things, there may be, you know, in regards to, there's, you know, this is not going to have a lot in regards to infrastructure, in regards to sewer water, that's going to come directly off of Northfield on that side. So it'll be a very short period of, of excavation where you get water up through the office facility that goes along with this, and also from any fire side of things on that as well. So there may be some foundational work in regards to blasting from the storage facility side and things like that. And to say, you know, lots two and three is in regards to that, that it's, you know, until we know what type of user that is, but I would have to anticipate being known that, you know, as the neighbors did say, that this is a rocky area. There probably will be some blasting from an infrastructure standpoint, and also from a foundational side.
Okay. Staff, did, were there any other questions that we had from the comments pertaining to Mr. Moulton?
When I think that there may be a discrepancy on a, on a zoning map, somebody mentioned the property to the north. It's, to my knowledge, it's still zoned residential RS10. It is not zoned commercial at this time.
Okay, planning commissioners have any questions for Mr. Moulton?
Just a comment, I, I'm very familiar with this site. As I've mentioned in another meeting, my aunt lives, actually a picture of her house is in this, in this document. I, I actually think that this project would be an improvement to that site, because that site has gone, it, it hasn't been well-kept for a number of years. There's been different pieces of equipment that have been stored on it that were in, needed to be repaired. So I would, you know, I think this would be a, a good project. I wished, and probably should have said this earlier, based upon this two-story building, that we would have had a sight view layout of if somebody's standing in their backyard, what, what are they going to see by sightline? Is it going to be that they can't see it based upon this eight-foot fence that Mr. Schmuthman has requested, which I would agree with? I'm not as concerned, I hate to say this, I'm not as concerned with the, I think it's going to look fine on, on Northfield. I'm more concerned with, with the sight view of the neighbors that live around it, and, and how it's going to impact their quality of life, I guess the best way to say it, with respects to the, the backyard. So that's my only concern at this point in time with respects. I think y'all have done a good job with the look of it, and, and tried to make those changes. It's just, as some of the people have mentioned, is this, this 40 feet, is it going to be too big? How tall is it going to be? Is it based upon the slope of, of this property? I think depending on where this sits, it may not be as bad as what we think it's going to be. You know, you know, you see what I'm trying to say?
Yeah. In regards to, we've done some sightline studies in regards to, you know, being put in today. The buffer that's going to be behind the built, the one-story buildings, the buildings themselves are actually be 13-foot high. So we've done, we've done some sightline studies in regards to if you're standing at the back of the residences on, on both sides, looking in, initially, that initial planting is only going to be six-foot tall. What we're putting in there are very fast-growing, or somewhat fast-growing evergreen tree material that'll go into that. So over time, those tree materials will actually grow and grow higher than those one-story buildings on the outside. So you're looking at that buffer material that's before that building. So you more or less you have the property line. You've got a 10-foot buffer, 12-foot buffer in regards to the type C buffer that's going in there. Inside that, you're going to have a double-staggered roll of evergreen materials in there. So the materials we're proposing to move forward with this will eventually grow taller than the one-story elements, which will, as they keep growing, you're looking at those tree types that we're putting in there, looking at 30, 40, 50 feet high. So as time evolves, that buffer's going to grow and create a vegetative wall, which will obscure more or less the two-story element of the building itself that's internally. Short-term, the 13 stories, if you're looking from, those are the most sightline studies we looked at, I apologize for not providing those in the booklet. We'll definitely put those in for council as this thing hopefully moves forward. The initial 13-foot, looking at that, looking in regards to that upper, maybe 10-foot of that two-story building being present in regards to looking over top, the 13-foot tall, one-story buildings from the units of the properties that are adjacent to the facility itself, so.
So, so Rob, I think the main concern from, from what I'm hearing is the two-story building. So how does this two-story building compare to the church that's on the property now?
It's a two-story building.
That's a two-story, isn't it?
It's down the hill.
Yeah, but it's an old two-story building that probably had eight-foot floors on it, not 15-foot floors. Because is each floor here a 15-foot floor, or a 14, 15, 16-foot?
Let Mr. Lowen, the architect, come on up and address some of these architectural elements on that side. He's got more in-depth on that side.
Good evening. To address your, your question, the overall height from the finished floor line to the eve of the building is about 23 feet. The building floor-to-floor is typically 10 to 11 feet on storage buildings, so it's not office building, which could be 14 feet plus or minus. So we've kept it to a minimum.
So the 40 feet that is mentioning for the, the maximum height, is taking into consideration these, whatever we want, the cornerstone pieces? If that's not, I'm sure that's not the right term, but.
The tower feature.
Thank you.
Basically, yeah.
So that's where we're coming into play with respects to the maximum height?
Yes. And, and the height of that, I think, is measuring about 33 feet eight. So we've, we have minimized some things, so we are below the 40-foot minimum or maximum.
Well, Mr. Chairman. I have to say that, that I agree with a lot of the comments from our neighbors tonight. I believe Mr. Johnson pointed out, you know, the, the first plan we had on this property, I really liked the little neighborhood commercial that we approved how many ever years ago. And then when this came back, the second plan with the storage units on it, I did think it was probably the nicest storage facility I'd ever seen. It was a really nice project, after we, we did tweak that a lot to, to work on, the, keeping the buildings as low as we could, especially around the perimeters and everything. And so I, I'm really concerned about this two stories. I, I really am. Mainly because all the homes that are around it, you know, the, the time that they were built, their eight-foot ceilings in those homes. It's no comparison to this being a two-story. This is the equivalent of a three or a four-story compared to their homes. And I, I just, just even thinking about the church that's there now, I do think this is much larger height-wise than what, what is there. And, and I, I realize that any development we do on this property will be a vast improvement to what we've had to look at on, on this property for all these years. It has certainly not been well-kept. But I don't think that that means we need to approve any development just to have a development, so that we can improve the look of what's there. I don't like the two-story buildings, I'll just say that.
Any other comments?
Not only do we currently have a two-story building on the property, and it is on the slope, and, and truly, I'll assure you, there's probably nobody in this room that walks this property more than I do. I'm constantly calling Walmart because we've got a homeless population that lives on this property in, in the wooded area back there. The reason I call Walmart is they bring their shopping carts up there, and they leave them sitting on Northfield Boulevard at the, the light posts there, where they go up the hill and into this property. The, I can see this property from my front porch. It, so, so I've got as good a view as anybody in the neighborhood, I guess, of this property. The, the, the property has not been maintained for years. So even since the church shut down, it has never been maintained. It has always been overgrown. The grass gets cut basically once, maybe twice a year when the neighbors start complaining to me, and, and I call the codes department and try and get the problem corrected. In general, we get it cut. But, but the property has just been so poorly maintained that we, we, it's, it's infested with skunks and raccoons and possums and every kind of vermin that you can put out there on this property. With, with the improvement to the property, which I think would, it would be, I, I'm, I'm not so concerned about the two-story building, because the sightlines from Elliott is basically looking up the hill. And with the fences and stuff there, you're, you're, you're going to block the majority of what they can see with the one-story buildings in that sightline going to them. From Northfield, I think it's a very attractive project. The, the, I was concerned about the fence. I think you've, you've agreed to the fence situation, which will improve the property quite a bit. This project will improve Sulphur Springs Road dramatically. And we talk about accidents at Sulphur Springs Road. Part of the reason we have accidents at Sulphur Springs Road is because it's a two-lane road that's matched up across the street from a road that, that's basically a three-lane road. And the, the, the light, the way it's set up is Sulphur Springs Road on the, the church side, or this property's side, is a two-lane road. So if there's a car there that's waiting to turn, then it sits there and holds the cars behind it, because they can't go across the road, even when the light's green. So, so there's, there's a lot of problems going on that will be resolved with this project. It, is, is it a perfect project? No, it's not. I, I mean, I, I agree that, I, I think that some of the, the elements of the older plan was, was more advantageous. I think maybe just to some, some, somewhat what the neighbors felt. But it's still a good project. And if it will turn this property into a well-minticured piece of property that's maintained, that, that, that improves many of the situations that currently exist on this property. The old silos are very dangerous over there on this property right now, because there are absolutely no maintenance whatsoever done on them, and, and it's completely unsupervised. So, so there's nobody that really knows what's going on around those silos on this property. But, so, so as far as Mr. Jones mentioned, the spring and stuff, of course, that's for future development, and those will come before us, because they will have to come back to be approved as, as they, they happen. But we can't stop the spring. The spring will be there in some form or fashion, whether it be running into a detention pond. There, there's really no reason to run it into a detention pond. Currently, the spring comes up out of the ground and immediately goes under Northfield and crosses over to run it off into the creek. But the, I mean, I, I, I'm actually excited about this project. I'll be honest with you. I think it has so many good things that come along with it, that it, to me, it's one of those things that often times when people come in here and talk about change, they're opposed to change for the sake of change, and I don't think that's the case. I'm not saying that with, with the people who spoke. They're, they're my neighbors, and I like them, and I really hope they like me after this meeting. But the, at least they'll know how I think. But the, but, but, but I, but I do think that it will improve the quality of life and, and the, the situation of safety for the neighborhood by having some type of controlled environment where there will be security systems in place on this property. And it's, as far as the development going on this property, it is much less intrusive than what a shopping center would be, because people might go to a shopping center every day. They're not going to go to their storage building every day. So, so there's, there's, there's many benefits because of the reduced amount of traffic this, this particular project brings to this property. That would be much better from the traffic standpoint than anything almost we could put on this property. So I guess I'm excited about it, because I think it's a good thing. The proof will be in the pudding, you know, when it's all said and done, if the project does get approved. But, but, but as one who can look out my window and see this property, I, I think this would be beneficial to, to not only the neighborhood, but, but it would, it would definitely improve the condition of this property. Because if you just go look at it today, it just doesn't look like much. And the property has been used, everything from used equipment, storage, to some kind of truck service was using it there for a while. And, and it's been used for a little bit of everything, but none of it was good. And so I'll say, since the church closed, maybe the church did do some good there. But the, I, I'm excited about it. I think it's a good project. I think it's well-planned out. And, and I think from the sightlines, having walked this neighborhood three times a day on a, for the last 13 years at least, I, I, I just think it's a really, really, a good thing that could happen in this community, so. There you go, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you.
I won't say that's my opinion, and it ought to be yours, but, but I like it.
Mr. Taylor, do you have comments? Or Mr. Lowen?
That's my question. I, I think that, Mr. Warren may have, I think you mentioned this, the western side of the building would be the part that's partially recessed. And so that 23 feet, I think Mr. Lowen mentioned, would be down even a couple of more feet from that, on that western side that abuts the residential. And then you can see on the art, the artist's rendering, you can see the front of that lot slopes toward the east or to the left on that. That's where it would start to get back to that full 23 feet, if I understand Mr. Lowen right. So the western side, that where the office along that side, it would be a few feet, approximately four buried into the ground. So you're going to be closer to 19 or 20 feet exposed up from the ground itself, right there.
Yeah, that, that was my biggest question, is, is can you take full advantage of the slope to lower this two-story building?
And that, that's exactly what we were planning to do along that portion right there. Now, the, the office, it will, it'll have to be a grade.
Understood on that one.
But as you go past the office, that grade will continue to rise, and the building will actually become buried. And then as you turn left, as you're coming into the development, it'll start to slope back down.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
I'm thinking in the minds, I'm getting on dangerous territory here, looking into the minds of my fellow planning commissioners here, but I think in the minds of a lot of them, they prefer what we saw on the previous plan for the single-story development, rather than the two-story development that we see here. I'm thinking that anyway.
Yes.
If for some reason this plan was rejected, would the developer proceed with the original plan?
My understanding, this is a different developer. So the original developer, that partnership dissolved. And so A+ Storage, who's developed several properties, including, I think, the first one in the gateway of the self-storage, came and started looking at this property. What they have seen is a trend toward a more higher-end, non-traditional storage, like what we had last time. And so they wanted to introduce what they feel like is a actually upgrade or a higher market value storage facility, which is why they asked us to do this. And obviously, to do that, they, they asked for about, I think it was about 30,000 to 35,000 extra square feet of storage, square footage space itself. And so I would have to ask them to speak 100% to that. But my understanding is, this is the plan they want to go with. If they can't do this, then I'm not sure that they would continue. Because early on the process, they asked, well, we, we talked about whether we'd have to go through this process or not. process or not. And we said if we want to do this plan, we will have to go back through the zoning entitlement process. And they made that clear choice. I did hear somebody asked about some sightline studies. We could, I, I think those have been done. Unfortunately, those, we hadn't shared those with you. We can certainly bring those back to the workshop to reflect how this building is sunken in the hill a little bit and then what that's gonna look like from the neighbors' side, if you would like us to.
We, we were given those at the last meeting that we had up in two eighteen.
Were they?
Yeah.
We asked them about them, but they didn't have them. They're, and he, he showed them on the...
They have a two-page copy of, it was just, it wasn't with the package, but...
You can't tell much from it, but it was, we did get something on it. Any questions for Mr. Taylor, Mr. Lowen, Mr. Mulchan?
And just FYI, the, you know, the last storage building that we looked at last month out in the gateway.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this concept. Again, I loved it. It's a great project. Now, that's the nicest storage building presentation I've ever seen, but I still don't think that we want that type. I don't want that type at this location.
And I can understand that too.
Speaking for myself, which was very different from my neighbor here.
But I will say that all the zoning around this, anybody's got the right to rebuild it two or three stories on any of those lots through there. And I, I know that all those are existing one-story ranch homes, but the, the zoning would allow for something that's even taller than what we're proposing.
Any other questions?
One, one more question. Do we have any idea, and it may have been in the booklet and I overlooked it, but, but do we have any idea what the operating hours of this facility would be?
Hang on just a second. I think it's manned from about eight to five, Monday through Saturday. I don't think they man it on Sunday. And then I think it's accessible. The keypad, it'll have a keypad and I think that's accessible to everybody twenty-four seven, if I'm not mistaken. It actually have three keypads, the two for the entrances up front off Northfield and then for the third going back towards Sulphur Springs Road. So all those will be controlled access.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, we're charged with making a recommendation to the city council. So we're gonna need a motion to either approve or to reject this or to defer it for further information. So if there's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
I'll move for approval and we'll see where we go.
Motion is made for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Opposed.
No. And the motion carries. It still has to go to the city council, folks that came and thank you for participating in the process tonight by coming. It still has to go to the city council for final approval. There'll be another public hearing there. Okay? So thank you for coming. Next item is zoning application for approximately eleven point three-two acres located along Fortress Boulevard and Blaze Drive to be rezoned from RS-15 to PCD Fortress Boulevard, Blaze, PCD. Williams Farm LP is the applicant. Mr. Anthony?
Thank you, sir. The applicant, Williams Farms LP, requests rezoning from RS-15 to PCD for an eleven point three-two acre property located at the northeast corner of Fortress Boulevard. The proposed development would include three commercial structures that are identified in the pattern book as a daycare, a bank or office building, and a multi-tenant commercial structure. Those would all be lining Fortress Boulevard. The development would also include a future self-service storage facility located on the eastern portion of the property. That is not particularly well-detailed in the pattern book. That would require a future amendment to the, to the PCD with, with additional details The proposed land uses that are shown are generally consistent with commercial fringe, CF, with the addition of the self-service storage facility. The applicant has committed to not allowing certain uses, including auto sales and service, payday loan and cash advance services, and bars. Access to the site would be strictly from Fortress Boulevard due to some driveway conflicts with the elementary school on Blaze Drive. The applicant has opted not to include any direct access to the site from Blaze Drive. Adjacent zoning includes PRD on the north and east and RS-15 on the south and west. Murphysboro twenty thirty-five shows this property as appropriate for a general residential and it is really up to the applicant to make the case to you that this plan would support the city's vision, long, long-term vision for this area. Rob Mulchan from SEC is here to talk more about the project. Staff requests that the planning commission conduct a public hearing and then make a recommendation to the city council and we can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Anthony? Okay, Mr. Mulchan?
Good evening again, Rob Mulchan, SEC. Appreciate your time tonight and consideration of this project. This is what we're calling Fortress at Blaze, a request for a rezoning to planned commercial district. You can see the site is located on the northeast corner of Blaze and, and Blaze Drive and Fortress Boulevard. As you can see in the area here, Blackman Elementary School is directly to the south and the other, the south side of Blaze Drive. To the southeast, I mean to the southwest, you have the emergency management buildings that are of course sort of the, part of the Rutherford County Emergency Management System, also Blackman Middle School. To the west, on the other side of Fortress Boulevard, you have property that's associated with city-owned property and the cell tower that's back there. To the north and northeast, you have the Indian Hills, I mean Indian Creek, PC, PRD on that side. And then off to the southeast, more or less along Blaze Drive, you have Blackman Farms down in there and that's a planned residential development as well. And then here's the zoning relationship to that, all the properties I spoke about to the west and south are RS-15, were associated with the standpoint of the schools and then the planned residential districts from the two neighborhoods to the east and north. Regards to the current land use plan, the properties look, is classified as auto-urban general residential. That's defined in regards to an attached or detached residential development that's designed as greatly influenced by the automobile. We feel that the proposed use is more in line with a, with this property, that it's, it's more in tune with the neighborhood commercial land use as part of the twenty thirty-five plan. That would include for this site in regards to the lending itself to providing commercial services for the residential areas and also the schools and the, the nine-one-one facility across the street in regards to that, providing, you know, services in regards to those. We feel that this is a better character fit in regards to land use. Couple of quick pictures, the view of the property as you're looking from Blaze Drive back towards Pocket Creek. The tree line that you see in the backdrop is Pocket Creek. That is the boundary between ourselves and the residential PRD to the north and east. This is a view from the intersection. This is looking back across Fortress towards the Blaze portion. You can see the property itself to the left. Off to the right-hand side, you can see the corner of the property that's associated with Blackman Elementary School. This is a view just as you're looking down Blaze Drive, as you're looking across the bridge going over Pocket Station, looking back towards Blackman Farms. And this is a view of Fortress looking north with the property, with our proposed property on the right-hand side. This is a view of the park and open space on the other side of Pocket Creek. So you can see the planned residential development over there is taking advantage of that area in regards to creating a open space and walking trails in regards to amenities for that residential. And you can see the, the vast amount of room between the actual residential area and the Pocket Creek itself. So there is a, a good bit of green space between that and the creek itself and then also there's relationship to our property line. Again, looking for a planned commercial district on this side. We're looking at the entitlement process of looking for four lots that will be a commercial, retail, office-type lot structure on the eleven point three acres. We have no immediate uses at this point in time. We're looking to move forward with just the entitlement process and giving some ideas of what we're anticipating from the character and look and feel of what we would anticipate development to look like for these four lots. Potential uses we're looking at in regards to this concept that you see in front of you or on the corner, a bank or office-type use on the corner to a more retail or a commercial little strip center type facility in the middle and potentially a daycare or office-type component on the northern end of the property along Fortress. And the main remainder of the portion, the body, as you see there is green spaces, that's to the future potential self-storage facility area over there. So that's kind of the character of what we're anticipating this, the project to fill out as time goes and users come forward to look at these properties. Setbacks in regards to the roadways themselves would be thirty-foot minimum for your front setback for any structures, ten foot on sides and twenty foot on rears. Inside your pattern book, you do have a list of allowable uses in regards to all four of these properties as the, we more or less looked at uses in regards to commercial fringe-type properties. These are the uses we've listed in here on the commercial fringe are more or less low-impact commercial-type uses that are conducive to being more in tune with the residential area and also with the schools themselves. The self-storage course is not a, a permitted right by, in the CF zone, but we're asking for this to be part of the overall PRD and PCD. Architectural character, this would go for all the different types of buildings that potentially would be available, would evolve on these properties. Maximum building height of thirty-five feet for all buildings. You're on more or less a single-story building. Buildings we maintain and in more of a neighborhood-type character. As you can see, the images I'm putting here on the, on the, on the board right now, you can see more or less a, we envision these buildings to look like on these properties as they develop out. Your, your commercial or office-type strip centers, you can see in the lower left-hand corner, your bank and stuff like that. So primarily a lot of brick materials, masonry-type materials on this. The picture you see in the upper-left is a daycare facility actually just down the street from the site. So that's more or less the character of what we're anticipating from a daycare of a daycare would take up residence on one of these properties on this side. And then again, some of the different components of the self-storage, I know we just talked about that in the last project on this, but these are some images of some other self-storage facilities around town that we would envision the same kind of quality and character, design and architectural quality to go on this, on the property itself. Again, primary materials, you know, masonry on that side, asphalt and/or standing seam metal roofs. Some secondary or accent-type materials such as stucco, tilt-up concrete wall construction is the option in regards to, you know, building these buildings, but based on the types of uses that we see, I, you know, there'd be a limited opportunity on that side. Regards to the site itself, we're looking at bringing forth GDO standards for the landscaping on the site. We want to, really want to make this kind of feel a very good quality of landscape character and not only, we want the architecture to be up there as well, but we want the actual landscape that goes in and around it to be of the GDO quality standards on that side. So we're looking to make that, that will be a requirement for any of the properties that is developed on this project. Parking will be set back at least ten feet from any of the public right-of-ways on that side. We'll utilize, you know, not only the landscaping, but also mounding and such forth to kind of help screen any of that parking that's, you know, that does come along with these projects to help mitigate that view of the parking lot from the roadways. We're also looking at making certain that this will be a pedestrian-friendly environment. I know in regards to the school, the neighborhoods that are around it, we're looking at making certain that any buildings that do develop along this will have a pedestrian connection back from the right-of-way back into the site itself. And then we'll also have the expanded five-foot foundational element in regards to landscaping along any of the buildings. Access to the site, as Donald did discuss, we are proposing only two entrances and the entrances will only be off of Fortress Boulevard. You're looking at one here, the first one that's closest to the intersection will be a right-in, right-out only configuration. That way we don't have any conflicts with individuals trying to turn left and cross over the roadway to get into the traffic to head south on Fortress in regards to the stacking lanes, turning left off of Fortress on the Blaze. The second entrance, the northern entrance, will be a full, full entrance on that side. So we'll have a three-lane configuration, one in, two out, right and left out there for full access. That road as proposed and the concept is to be the road that will run back and facilitate entrance into the self-storage area of the property on itself over there. And to go along with this, again, no access to Blaze Drive. We, there was some discussion in regards to access the Blaze, I mean, on that side, and we just felt there was too many conflicts in regards to the ins and outs for the elementary school on Blaze on that side. We didn't want to make any extra additional conflicts besides the large amount of actual stacking on Blaze in regards to the intersection with Fortress. We're also incorporating monument signage at both those entrances for the different businesses and that'll evolve on this property. I appreciate your time and consideration of this project and I look forward to any questions now or after the public hearing.
Mr. Mulchan, you said the landscape going to be up to GDO standards. From the photos you showed in here, it looks like the buildings will pretty well meet them too.
That's the kind of character that they're, we're looking for in regards to kind of making this, you know, as, as architecturally sound as we can and kind of give some good quality and character, a lot of the development that's out in that area, you know, not only the schools themselves, but we want to make certain that anything commercial that would evolve in this corner, that's with this project, would be in tune with the, you know, Blackman Farms development in regards to the masonry-type materials, in regards to the cement fiber board, but also the other homes and businesses that are along the Fortress and Blaze area.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Mulchan?
I've got one for, either for Mr. Mulchan or staff. Under the listing of uses permitted, it's got convenience, sales and service. Does that include a convenience store? And then, then the follow-up question would be if, if so, with respects to the proximity to the elementary school, would they be in a position to even be able to sell beer?
I think the convenience, sales and service, if I remember right from the zoning coordinates, it's a, it could be a convenience store of up to five thousand square feet, if I remember correctly. With regard to the proximity, that's a, that's a very good question. That's something I would have to look into. I don't know exactly what the distance requirements are. That's, that's regulated through another part of City Hall, but we can definitely check into it.
And so, Rob, we're also looking, some of the things that you had mentioned was a bank, office, office, retail, daycare, and self-storage site. I live in this area and I think this is a prime piece, piece of property. But we've already got a self-storage right down the street. We've already got a daycare right down the street. I mean, I think this is a prime piece of property to do a little bit more than what you're trying to do right here. I mean, I, I would really consider, hope you would consider putting something else of a better magnitude on this piece of property than talking about a self-storage daycare, which we have three within less than a mile. I mean, that's oversaturated, that area. I mean, I, I really want this project to go through because it's a great piece of property. It's about the only thing left right there about a school and it's around about really good real estate. So I would please consider that.
Okay. Yeah, and like I said, this is more or less just a concept to, to move forward with what we're, what the developer's intentions are in regards to what he wants to see come forward with this, but this is our best offer in regards to what we wanted to kind of show is a first blush or a first pass kind of scenario of what we could anticipate from uses on the property.
I get it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like Anybody? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Anthony?
It's like Mr. Mulchan's birthday, we're gonna surprise him. I was, Mr. Belachandra was just talking to me a moment ago and, and he thinks that it actually would be a really good idea to have a right-in, right-out on Blaze Drive. I don't know if, I don't know, Rob, if you want to come talk anymore about that, but I think we probably should before you vote.
Well, we'll see a site plan on this.
You will, you will definitely see a, you'll definitely see a site plan on it. I only bring, I only bring that up because at the neighborhood meeting for this, we, it was very well attended and the access from Blaze Drive was, was actually probably the primary issue that, that we heard about. So that's why I do want to go ahead and bring it up today as opposed to, to waiting till the site plan.
Mr. Belachandra?
Chairman Lamb and members of the planning commission, the reason I brought this up is for more traffic circulation. What we have done with this piece of property, corner property, is to, the gravitation to this development from Blackman Farms will have to go through the intersection, go through the traffic signal, make a right to get, get to this property. So that's the reason why I feel that a well-designed right-in, right-out, not a left-out, but a right-in, right-out... right-in, right-out would, would provide better access for the residents from the Blackman Farm to enter and exit the site, number one. And number two, also, this property is a corner property. When they make the right turn, they will have access to the traffic signal to make a left heading south towards ninety-six.
Why wouldn't you want a left turn onto Blackman there? It seems to me like...
Not left turn onto Blackman.
Having to go back out on Fortress.
Turn onto Blaze.
On Blaze.
I mean, Blaze.
On Blaze.
I'm sorry, on Blaze.
Yes, on Blaze, a, a regulated, as well-designed right-in, right-out is what...
Why wouldn't you want a left turn leaving this site going onto Blaze?
Because of the traffic with the school. If you really look at the layout and how it's marked, it's impossible for squeezing in a left turn into this site.
Is it a three-lane section through there, or is that a two-lane?
It's a three-lane cross, it's a three-lane.
It is a three-lane.
Yes. In fact, it's four-lane merging into three lanes.
So you don't, you don't think a left turn would be...
Yes, there is not adequate storage for left turn. That's why I feel that a right-in, right-out, when we discussed some preliminary conceptual plans, we told the design engineer, I mean, we, we requested to look at this very carefully about the access to this property, and they came up with not having an access, but I think it'll be better if we at least give them to look at a possible right-in, right-out on Blaze Drive.
But if you ended up, like Councilman Wade was asking, something else back there where it says self-storage site, where they could participate in a, another exit road further away from the intersection, then you would, it would be, obviously, you'd have to have a left, left and right turn there.
The problem is the circulation across the street. If you look at how the school traffic circulates in and out, when you push that, that driveway as far back, you still will have issues making a left onto Blaze Drive.
Depending on when schools letting in and out, they stack on both sides of this road, and it, Ram's exactly right. A right-in, right-out would probably work. It would have the benefit of giving you an emergency access if you needed to get to the property, and for some reason, the other side was blocked. But it, it would, I, I think leaving this property to get back to Blaze will be difficult any way you look at it, because you're still going to have to either cross Fortress to get back down to the light so you could turn to Blaze, or you're, or you're going to have to cross, you're either going to cross, what, three lanes of traffic up there, or you're going to cross, but, but the problem is, is there's stacking lanes there with cars sitting still for, for long periods during the day. And so, it, it, it's just a really, it's just a challenging situation where you're talking about there trying to, to continue to have traffic flow, but to, to, to meet the, the issues of being located right across the street from that school, that school. It, it just, it creates a, you know, driving environment that's, it's kind of difficult to, to describe, but, but it's, it...
For, for traffic operation, three hundred and sixty days a year, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, what happens is the folks that are living in the Blackman Farms area coming down on Blaze Drive will have to go through this, I mean, have to go to the signal, make a right to get to this site. Here, if you have a right-in, right-out, they have the opportunity to get, get into the site.
I agree with that.
For operational reasons.
On your intersection, at least.
I totally agree with that. I'm just, I guess I'm a little concerned of the number of right-in, right-outs we've been approving lately. We just, there's one on this, in front of the bank office site there on the corner right now, and, and we all know these right-in, right-outs sometimes are invitations to go for it, make that left turn if you can get out of there and go. And, and so it's just, it bothers me to see as many of these right-in, right-outs, we've done numerous ones lately. And this is one right here, when the school traffic's not there, I can see people taking a left out of there regardless, so.
Can I just ask, where along Blaze Drive, are you talking about having the right-in, right-out at the bank property or back on the self-storage property?
As far back.
As far back.
From the intersection possible. Now, it depends on the design.
There wouldn't be one until this back section develops.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Balachandra? Thank you, Ram. We're ready for a motion.
Public hearing.
Don't we already do?
Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
But you know what, I think he did ask that.
See, I told you.
Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing.
Second public hearing.
Let me go ahead and approve this for Mr. Lamb, make another motion to have another public hearing. I make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next one is annexation plan of services, annexation petition for approximately 2.5 acres located along Memorial Boulevard. Cynthia Keith, Keith Lee is the applicant, Mr. Blomley. Good evening, Mr. Blomley, I wondered if you were here.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, I was being so nice and quiet over here.
Amazing.
And, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Our next public hearing is an annexation plan of services and petition for property that's located along the east side, or excuse me, the west side of Memorial Boulevard, north of West Thompson Lane. It's actually just a little bit north of the public shopping center. Ms. Keith Lee and her family own this two-acre parcel, there's a single-family residence that sits upon it. It's surrounded on the north, south, and west by the city limits. It's kind of a, just a little gap in the existing city limits. And Ms. Keith Lee and her family would like to market the property, and so they're requesting annexation. It'd be a relatively easy parcel to affect its annexation. Services are available to the subject property upon annexation. It's within the city's urban growth boundary, and as you can tell by the map, it's contiguous with the existing city limits. We have the plan of services in your agenda packet. It details how services will be, will be provided, including to the existing house that's on the subject property. Yeah, next item is the zoning request, but this particular item is just for the annexation of this parcel, as well as the approximately 210-foot strip of right-of-way of Memorial Boulevard directly in front of the subject property. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation for the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Ms. Keith Lee is in the audience tonight if you have any questions for her.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Blomley? If none, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no questions, we're ready for a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item G is a zoning application for the same property, approximately two acres, located along Memorial Boulevard to be zoned commercial highway simultaneous with annexation. Cynthia Keith Lee is the applicant, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This is, as you mentioned, the same two-acre tract that we just considered for annexation. They are requesting a zoning classification of commercial highway simultaneous with annexation. You can tell the property directly to the north and the property directly to the south are already zoned commercial highway. There's some, there's a vacant parcel, I believe there used to be a motel there years ago that, that is no longer there, that's zoned commercial highway to the north. This property, as I mentioned, is just a single-family, there's just a single-family house on it. To the south, there are two single-family parcels that are, that are also zoned commercial highway. I believe the owner of those two parcels is, is contemplating the potential development of those two parcels, and directly to the south of those two parcels is the public shopping center, which is zoned commercial highway. Across the street is the, the Veterans Hospital, which is in the unincorporated county. The, as I mentioned, the request is to zone the property to commercial highway simultaneous with annexation. Twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan recommends that the property develop as auto-urban, general, commercial. And the future land use plan, or the comprehensive plan defines this as a classification having a heavy reliance on the automobile, and it describes the classification as most commonly associated with highway-oriented commercial or business strip, including such uses as fast food, restaurants, gas stations, and strip shopping centers. And the plan specifically identifies the commercial highway zone as being compatible with this land use classification. So therefore, the applicant's request appears to be consistent with the twenty thirty-five plan. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this zoning request and then formulate a recommendation to council, and as I mentioned, Ms. Keith Lee is in the audience if you have any questions for her.
Any questions? If none, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Hey, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no further questions, we're ready for a motion. So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item H, annexation plan of services for annexation petition for approximately 10.7 acres located along Cherry Lane. Helen Arloster is the applicant, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Our next annexation plan of services and annexation petition is located at 504 Cherry Lane. It's a 10.7-acre tract located just to the west of the, of Roland Way. There's one single-family residence on the property and three accessory structures. And for anybody in the audience who is here to speak regarding, or is interested in speaking regarding this application tonight, the first public hearing that we'll conduct on this property is purely for the annexation petition and the annexation plan of services. The zoning request will be the next item on the agenda after this one. The property is within the city's urban growth boundary, and it is contiguous with the existing city limits. As you can see, the right-of-way of Cherry Lane directly in front of the subject property is already in the city limits, and the Siegel Soccer Park is located to the south across Cherry Lane from the subject property, and it too is in the city limits. The applicants have requested annexation into the city limits for the future development of this property, and we'll go over that in the next public hearing. Most services are available to serve the subject property, however, a couple that I did want to go over real quick. Sanitary sewer is not available to serve the subject property. It is, however, on the Siegel Soccer Park property and would have to be extended from Siegel Soccer Park to this property in order to serve it, in order for development to occur on the property with city sewer. The applicant has been in contact with, with the Parks and Recreation Department, and the, the city is amenable to, to allowing the sewer extension on its property via the acquisition of, or the, the establishment of the necessary easements in order to facilitate the, the construction of that, of that sewer line. In addition, the existing house, as it's currently situated on the property, cannot be served by the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department for Fire Protection Services. It sits roughly 750 feet off of Cherry Lane, and the access to the house is, is substandard, and at this time, could not support a fire truck. And so, the applicant is tasked with a choice. The first choice would be to demolish the house before the effect, demolish the house and all of the structures prior to, prior to the effective date of annexation. And the second choice would be to follow the steps that are listed in my staff comments, which I'll, I'll read very briefly. Number one, install a fire hydrant on the subject property. Two, construct driveway improvements to the satisfaction and approval of the Fire and Rescue Department, including widening the driveway at the entrance to a minimum of 20 feet, including removing any fencing necessary to achieve the 20-foot width, and widening the remainder of the driveway to a minimum of 16 feet, constructing a fire truck turnaround, and providing documentation sealed and signed by a licensed engineer that the driveway is constructed to support a fire truck. Number three, trim tree canopies overhanging the driveway for a minimum clearance of 13.5 feet from grade, and remove, demolish the northernmost and westernmost accessory structures as MFRD cannot access them to provide fire protection, even if the aforementioned steps and access improvements are constructed. So the applicant has some thinking to do, and I've been discussing with him these options, and he's aware of these options, and he's mulling them over with the current property owners because they still live there. And in a moment, I'd like him to get up and just acknowledge that he has received these and that he is, and that he accepts that he must do one or the other. But with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, and we need to go ahead and conduct a public hearing on this annexation petition and plan of services.
Okay. Do you want those comments at this public hearing or the, or the next one?
At this one, just acknowledging that, that he has received the information and that he is, is, understands that he must do one or the other.
Okay, well, let's do that before we open the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Larry Gilliland. I'm in receipt of those, and we are trying to mull that through, work that through. It is a challenge. The property owners are 90 years old, they've lived there for over 40 years, and they are going to move after their rezoning, so, but I do understand that I have those choices.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gilliland. Any questions before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, I'll close, oops, come right up. Yes, ma'am. This is on annexation only. Yes, ma'am. In that case, I'll close the public hearing. I think we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval, subject staff comments.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Okay, the next one is a zoning application for the same property, 10.7 acres, located along Cherry Lane to be zoned RSA Type II simultaneous with annexation. Catalyst Design Group is the applicant, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. As you mentioned, this is the same property that we just considered for annexation, 10.7 acres along the north side of Cherry Lane. The applicants are requesting a zoning classification of RSA Type II, which is single-family residential attached district suburban townhouse. If you recall, Type I is very similar to the old RZ zoning classification. Type II is suburban townhouse, and Type III is urban townhouse, and they're requesting suburban townhouse, which would be similar to the type of development that we've seen with most of the townhouses that have developed in Murfreesboro are of a more suburban nature. The, the property is, as I mentioned, directly across the street from the Siegel Soccer Park, which is zoned P for park. Directly to the east, west, and north are the, is a single-family residential subdivision in the unincorporated county Roland Estates. Further to the west is the Liberty Village and Enclave at Liberty Village PRD, which is in the city limits and consists of townhomes and single-family residential detached homes, which is under development right now, the enclave is. To the east, at the intersection of Memorial Boulevard and Cherry Lane, are several residential parcels that are in the city and zoned CF, as well as a large residential parcel that's still in the unincorporated county. Zoning ordinance, as I mentioned, in 2017 was amended to add the RSA zoning district. The RSA Type II zone allows for townhouses to be developed at a maximum density of 21.5 dwelling units per acre. Now, the zoning ordinance amendment that you just considered earlier on the agenda and recommended for approval would bump that down to 12 units maximum per acre. Of course, that would still have to go to the city council for, for final approval for that zoning ordinance amendment. In the RSA Type II zone, each building facade is required to contain a minimum 75% brick, stone, or cementitious siding. Also, there's an open space requirement, and that open space requirement was another component of the zoning ordinance amendment that you considered earlier in the agenda. Right now, the zoning ordinance says that, that townhome developments of 10 acres or greater have a minimum open space requirements, requirement, that would be bumped down, that threshold would be removed with the zoning ordinance amendment that you recommended for approval earlier in the evening, in that any townhouse development would be required to meet a minimum open space requirement. space requirement. The, the 2035 comprehensive land use plan recommends that this property develop as auto-urban general residential. And I placed the, the 2035 future land use map on the, on the computer screens. An excerpt from the future land use map is there on your screens and it describes this classification as heavily dependent on the automobile and includes detached residential dwellings as well as attached housing types, subject to compatibility and open space standards. For example, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and patio homes. The plan recommends a density of 3.54 to 8.64 dwelling units per acre. And at the current density of 21.5 dwelling units per acre, of course, that maximum is, is far exceeded. However, with the zoning ordinance amendment, the 12 dwelling units per acre, that gap would be, would be significantly decreased. The applicant's engineer has submitted a letter accompanying the application and he outlines why he feels that, that the request is appropriate despite the fact that the maximum density that the zone allows is greater than what the, the comprehensive plan allows. And I, I'd like to invite Mr. Jack Parker with Catalyst Design Group, representing Mr. Gilliland, and Mr. Gilliland to, to go over that letter and, and detail the justifications for the deviation from the comprehensive plan with regards to density. With regards to use, the, the proposed use, the proposed uses that would be allowed in the RSA Type 2 zone would generally be consistent with what the comprehensive plan recommends.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission members. I'm Jack Parker with Catalyst Design Group. I appreciate your time this evening. As, as Matthew alluded to, we have done a fairly comprehensive study of this piece of property and in doing so, we have reached the conclusion that although the zoning that we are requesting would allow for a higher density than the 35 comprehensive plan is looking for, the shape and configuration of it will not allow anywhere near that, that density. To, to put it in perspective, basically, because it's a long, narrow piece of property, there are certain setback requirements due to right-of-way, front yards, rear yards. And in order to satisfy all, all of those and, and satisfy all of the different department requirements, there, there is no way for you to get anywhere near even 12 units per acre. It's really going to be more like somewhere between six and eight units per acre is really all that is developable in this instance. So we, we have studied that, we've come to that conclusion, and that's, that's the gist of the letter that we submitted to staff for review. Also wanted to, to follow up on, on one, one item that Matthew, that he, he brought up with regard to open space. Since this property is greater than 10 acres, even if the, the council, for whatever reason, did not approve the, the request to, to remove that minimum acreage requirement, this property, this project would have to provide open space regardless.
And to follow up on what Mr. Parker said, there is a, a concept plan that they've submitted and the concept plan and elevations have been included in the application materials. I will mention that the elevations and the concept plan are illustrative only. At this point, they're, they're requesting a bulk zoning. So these are just for informational purposes and it would be nothing that, that they could be held to. I think they wanted to show you their, their idea of how they intend to develop the property. Of course, that would be subject to change.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Parker? Thank you, Mr. Parker. Anything else, Matthew?
Yes, sir.
Any questions by the planning commission?
I'm sorry, I've got one. I'm getting a little lost here. So with respects to what we just voted on, what are they going to have to abide by, assuming city council approves? Are they going to have to abide by the 20 units or by what's being passed at the 12?
No, the, the, currently, the zoning ordinance allows a maximum of 21.5 dwelling units per acre.
Correct.
The zoning ordinance amendment that was considered earlier tonight would bump that down.
Correct.
12 units per acre. So they would, if the zoning ordinance amendment is approved, any development on this property, if this zoning request is approved, would be subject to the maximum of 12 dwelling units per acre.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Gilliland, you have something you'd like to say?
Comment?
Sure.
What you're looking at and what we submitted as far as the, the elevation, that is the product. I have two projects currently underway right now. One is the Ashton at Salem Creek. And what we submitted is what we're building at the Ashton of Salem Creek. I also have another project that was recently approved by the city, which is the Villas of Regal Square. That's on the north side. That's a little bit different product. That's a product that is mostly brick masonry like this RSA zoning would dictate with rear entry garages. What our intent is on that property, because of the location, the layout, the size, and this zoning, our intent is to build a quality product. Also, with the price, the land over on Cherry Lane is, is not as cheap as we would like it. So with the land cost and our offsite cost, we are going to be forced to put something nice on there that the market would support. So we're excited about the RSA zoning. It, my understanding is we're the first rezone request for RSA. And I think that with the open space requirements and the masonry requirements, that it will really be a nice project for the city. So we respectfully request that you consider that. And there is some risk for the city because you cannot see what we're going to build there. And I understand that. If I can answer any questions about the intent or what those finishes might look like, I'd be glad to.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Gilliland.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
I'm Joyce Morehead and I live at 4123 Calico Court. And I am one of the seven neighbors that, whose property backs up to the Lusters Estate. I think that where I'm concerned about is when we met at our neighborhood meeting, we had a proposal of what it would look like, but it wasn't the unit that was going in, just like what he just related to you guys. And I have ever faith that he is going to put in a nice unit, but we still haven't seen the actual hard copy of what's going in. And we are concerned about the price point of these units. And he's reassured us that they're all going to be good. But we're concerned about blasting in the area because there's a lot of rock out there. Who would be responsible for it? I think at the first meeting, it was brought up about an access in and another access out. It's been allowed for one. And I just, I just think there's a lot of unanswered questions. And of course, we are in that rural area where we have our deer and our antelope roaming every day and we kind of hate to see that. But we know that progress is, it's going to happen. But, and we want to be good neighbors, but we want to be treated fairly because we are an older established neighborhood and we're fiercely protective of our property out there. So we want to make sure that we have our privacy. We want to know what kind of burn, what sort of fencing that is going to go up, that we all back up to. And I, there's a concern that I have with maybe so not, not so much in Rutherford County, but I know in a lot of the larger surrounding areas, I don't know if we could put restrictions or covenants in the home buyers for this proposal, that there would not be any Airbnb temporary rental of these units. If that could somehow be in the cause or a covenant of potential buyers of this property, because of the proximity of the Siegel Soccer Park, that could really be a nightmare for older established neighborhoods where you have people coming in just to party for the weekend and then be gone. And I think a lot of us are concerned too about the traffic in the area because on soccer weekends, when, when everybody's there, we have people from the, from out of town that actually come inside of our Roland Way and park to keep from paying the city fees that, you know, for parking at the soccer park. So we already are dealing with that. And when we are leaving to go take a left at Cherry Lane, I mean, at Roland Way to go into Murfreesboro, we have to go down Cherry Lane and turn and head back. Traffic is a nightmare out there on Cherry Lane when we have our soccer, soccer tournaments and what even just regular practices. So I'm, I was glad to hear that the number of homes are going to go down because when we first met, we were thinking of 67 townhomes. And if you allow three cars per unit, which if, if there are going to be two to three-bedroom homes, I think that's probably a fair assessment. You multiply that out and it's, it's already bad. It's, it's bad for the area. I'm not really, I know the, the Lusters personally and they are sweet, precious people. And I'm not nixing the whole idea of it because I know that they need, you know, they need relief for their situation. It's a lot of maintenance for them. And I, I'm hopeful that Mr. Gilliland would be a good neighbor and provide things for us. But we want to make sure that the blasting in the area, if there's any damage.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Morehead.
Those things. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Good evening, Board. My name is Tammy Joyce. I own the property at 604 Cherry Lane, which is right next door to the proposed site here. There's several things and there's even more questions after tonight. I'm, I'm really looking for answers in this whole situation. Flooding is a concern I have. The property slopes, so any development, water would run. Construction, we were told in that neighborhood meeting that the construction could, was going to be done in phases, so it would take years. Years is a long time to sit in your backyard and listen to construction. It's just a, that, there's no definite game plan in this, it seems. No, no true answers. The traffic, as was said, I have sat in my driveway for five minutes just to pull out onto the road and the soccer tournaments are going on. I deal with that. You know, we're not opposed to growth, but we do ask that you earnestly consider the decision you make and how it affects those of us that have been there for a long time and the direction that we want to see the neighborhood go in. There's not been a geotechnical survey done, so we don't know if there's going to be blasting, but we are in Tennessee, blasting is probably going to have to occur. My plans to open up my massage business that I just got my license for, well, you can't have a massage business in your home with blasting and construction. So that's put on hold for three or four years at least. Six, eight years, we don't know. We were given a nice picture when we went to that meeting and then halfway through the meeting, an hour and a half into the meeting, we're told, that's not what we're getting. So there again, I stand before you with more questions than answers. So I don't even know what my true concerns are. I just listed the ones I could think of with the information I've been provided with. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Gilliland or Mr. Parker, one, can you address some of the questions I believe Ms. Morehead had pertaining to price and assurances of the style, fencing.
Regarding site questions.
Restrictive covenants on temporary rentals, that type of thing?
I'll defer to Jack for the site questions. And regarding the other question, fencing, I'll be glad to stand up and answer that.
Okay.
As far as, as far as any drainage concerns, we, we will, of course, comply with all the city of Murfreesboro's requirements for stormwater detention and water quality treatment. Traffic, we've been in contact with ROM on multiple occasions and discussed this project and have been, been told that it's not required to have a, a traffic study with this, with the scale of development. Trying to think of the other.
Blasting?
Blasting, that, again, that, that will, that will be determined once, once a geotechnical investigation has been completed. What I can say is that typically, when there is blasting required, there's a blast survey that is done beforehand and is available. It's that service is available to all adjacent homeowners so that they can have their homes surveyed before there's any blasting done. And they'll have a record of that so that they can check it against what their, what their structures are, look like post blasting. So that's, that's really all that we can, we can say at this particular time regarding blasting.
Okay. She, he covered that. Okay. Mr. Gilliland, maybe pricing, styling, and give assurances of your product there.
And that's the million-dollar question of the day as far as pricing and styling. Again, going back to the RSA zoning with the 70% masonry, the styling of the property will be a mixture of hopefully one in two-car garages with front-facing garages. The minimum square footage is, based on market studies that we have, would be somewhere around 1,600. Several of our plans go up to 2,300 square feet. We are shooting for master bedroom down. And so our target on this would be a active adult or even an empty nester product. Of course, there is a mixture, whenever you do that, of, of single parents or singles. It's just kind of what you get. But again, our price point, because of our offsite cost, our land cost, our development cost, our price point would be on the upper end of North Murfreesboro. We anticipate above 250. Probably by the time this is developed out and built, would be 2019, we would start construction of the vertical and, and market pricing that way would, would put it up close to 300.
Restrictive covenants pertaining to temporary rentals?
Yes. And, and I had not thought, thought about the Airbnb, so that's a good question. It's not something that we've dealt with a lot yet. But this will be in, in a horizontal property regime. And a companion to that would be restrictive covenants. And our covenants, those are typically initially established by the developer and/or the builder and would be voted on once, once complete by the homeowners. So in those covenants, we have not discussed restriction on rentals yet. We're just not that far in the process. But certainly, I don't think anyone there in that level of housing would want Airbnb as a neighbor. So we'd certainly consider that.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the planning commission?
I know we kind of discussed the, the water concern and the flooding concern. And this property is still basically farmland as, as it currently sits, just like the property that's on both sides of it, which was probably not farmland that long ago. But as a general rule, as, just as their property was developed, because there will be a detention pond and it's currently showing a retention pond or a detention pond, one or the other on the front of this property, that would probably not make the situation worse. It would probably make the situation better. And generally, an engineered site plan does make the situation better. So I'm, I'm not as concerned about the water concern as, as, as I would be the development itself. Do, do you expect this development to be a, a multi-phase development or are you going to try to develop it basically at one time?
Probably two phases. Phase one would be the front and since it, it will be at that density. Phase one would be the front, and since it will be at that density, so we'd phase it out. What makes this a multi-year development is part of the concern of the Parks and Rec Department with extending sewer through the park was that the sewer work would begin in the off-season. They don't want us working when there's soccer games going on, and so that will delay our start date. But once we develop that, typically, these units could be four-unit buildings, they might be six, and so we like to build 12 units at a time, so we could process through it fairly quickly.
But if it's going to be a two-phase project, which.
Two phases.
As you think it would be. That would probably indicate that on the front side, the first part of the development, all the blasting would probably take place at one time, and then if you didn't develop the entire site, there would probably only be about two phases of blasting that would take place. It wouldn't be blasting for two or three years as the project develops. It would be one phase of blasting for the first phase and one phase of blasting for the second phase. It might go for a few weeks even, but it wouldn't be, if a person's thinking about developing a business, it's not something I don't think that would be an ongoing problem with just hearing blasting every day for three years. So, I think that's, you know, I know we hear this every meeting we come to just about, but for the average resident who hears about a development next door to their house, there's always that worst-case scenario of what could happen, and that's genuinely an honest, realistic expectation because I would feel the same way if somebody was doing it next door to my property, and as you understood tonight, there is somebody talking about doing something next to my property. But this is a situation where there's the opportunity there to make sure that the protection's put in place as far as if there is any damage that's done by the blasting, it will be covered, and it will not be a long-term, continuous blasting over a long period of time. So, I hope I can give you some assurance that it may not be as bad as you imagine. I'll put it that way.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gilliland.
Thank you.
There's no other questions or comments from the Planning Commission. We're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like a motion to approve this zoning application, subject to all staff comments.
Motion is made to approve. Is there a second? Did you say second, Eddie?
Second.
Okay, current. Motion is made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We have a couple of mandatory referrals left on the agenda, the first of which is mandatory referral right-of-way abandonment to consider the abandonment of a segment of Ragland Avenue right-of-way and of an unnamed right-of-way. Matt Taylor's applicant, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This right-of-way abandonment is for the very eastern end of Ragland Avenue, as well as some platted right-of-way that does not show up on the map itself. It's the area colored in purple, creates kind of a T-shape. Back on the SC Pascal subdivision plat that was recorded in October 1950, everything that's in purple on the map before you was shown as right-of-way. You'll recall, last year, the Walker Station PRD was approved for a 23-unit, single-family, detached development. That would be a horizontal property regime, and that was predicated upon the abandonment of the right-of-way that's shown before you. The Walker Station plan actually shows houses where the right-of-way is located right now, and so, of course, it was conditioned upon this right-of-way being abandoned. We've conducted a right-of-way abandonment study to determine whether or not this right-of-way would have any impact, the abandonment of this right-of-way would have any impact, and we have determined that no departments have expressed any objection. The one condition was from, came from the Murfreesboro Electric Department and the Murfreesboro Water Resources Department. There are some existing utilities in the existing right-of-way that those two departments would like to have easements dedicated if the right-of-way is approved to be abandoned. With that being said, the Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this right-of-way abandonment tonight and then formulate a recommendation to the city council, after which the city council will need to vote whether or not to move forward with the abandonment. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Now, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. We're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Final public hearing tonight is mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment to consider the abandonment of a segment of Mary Beth Court right-of-way and of the drainage easement. Matt Taylor is applicant, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Mary Beth Court is a small stub street that is located, it's located just off Esquire Drive in North Murfreesboro. Back last month or the month before, we saw a preliminary plat for the Beckham Point subdivision. The Beckham Point subdivision is an RS VI development that if you look at this map before you, the area that is colored in blue is the segment of Mary Beth Court that's going to be affected by the Beckham Point subdivision. Mary Beth Court is actually only constructed, if you look on the map here, where Beth Court is shown, that's where the pavement stops. Where the Mary label is, there's nothing beyond that, even though it's recorded as public right-of-way. So, the new development that's proposed looks to replat the cul-de-sac of Mary Beth Court, kind of reorient it a little bit. So, this right-of-way abandonment would essentially abandon the right-of-way that's there right now, and then they would replat it in the size and shape that they're showing on their preliminary plat that's been approved by the Planning Commission. So, we have two items tonight. One is the abandonment of that cul-de-sac of Mary Beth Court, of which no departments have expressed any objection to, and then there's the abandonment of the drainage easement that's marked in purple on the map before you. This is a drainage easement that does not have any infrastructure located in it, and so the applicants are looking to abandon that because it would impact several of their proposed lots. The preliminary plat for the Beckham Point subdivision was approved subject to this right-of-way abandonment and drainage easement abandonment, and normally, we wouldn't have a public hearing on a drainage easement abandonment, but since it's coupled with a right-of-way abandonment, we went ahead and packaged it all as one. We would recommend that, once you vote, that this be taken in two separate motions, one for the easement abandonment and one for the right-of-way abandonment. We'll need to go ahead and conduct a public hearing on this matter and then formulate a recommendation to city council.
Okay. Any questions? I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Let's do, let's ask for a motion on the right-of-way abandonment to start with.
Make a motion for the right-of-way abandonment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And now the drainage easement abandonment.
Make a motion for the drainage easement abandonment.
Second.
All, motion is made in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. Staff reports and other business. Mr. Blomley?
I have none.
No, sir.
Mr. Whitaker?
I would like to ask if anybody's still watching. Please respond to our special census. We have about, we counted about 61,306 of our citizens. We've got a long way to go, so please respond.
Get help from our local media to publish that. Mr. Ives, you have anything, sir?
I have nothing.
Okay. If there's no further business.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. We do have a special meeting next Wednesday at 7:00 PM.
Oh, you forgot it.
Yeah. Three public hearings that evening, and just reminding you that it will be for an application for annexation and zoning, which some people are familiar with SAZERAC and some ordinance amendments.
We'll see you next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay. If no further business, we stand adjourned.